So the city council has just returned from a closed session and I will ask our city attorney if we have any reportable action.
There was no reportable action.
Thank you. So I will now call to order the meeting of the city council of the city of Atascadero. And we will ask council member Borbo to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council member Borbo?
Here.
Council member Darris? Or council member Funk?
Here.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Moreno?
Yeah.
All present.
Thank you. If you're watching or listening to our city council this evening to our meeting, we welcome you. If you'd like to speak during any time that is set aside for either community forum or during any one of our public comment agenda items, you can call 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. And if you're here on the webinar, when we open public comment, you can simply press the the raise hand button at the bottom and we will bring you on that way. When you, if you are on the phone, please let us know which item is that you would like to speak on. And again, that number is 805-538-2888. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Hello?
Okay. I have a motion by council member Funk, a second by mayor Protem Newsom, and we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda. And the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes. Roll call, please.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Borbo?
Yes.
Council member Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we are on, we have a, on to presentations. We have a few this evening. And our first one, I'm going to ask, I don't see CR Laura yet in our attendees. So I'm gonna, I'm going to move to the second one. Let's start there because I do see Jennifer Adams. So we have a proclamation recognizing October 2021 as Domestic Violence Action Month. And this proclamation will be received by Jennifer Adams from Lumina Alliance. She is their CEO and well-known to those of us here on the council. And council member Borbo is going to offer that proclamation.
I am. I did not, I didn't pay attention to that. Where am I reading that from?
Oh, it was in your email some time ago. Let's see, I will ask, let's, let's, if you can access that in the next 30 seconds, otherwise, council member Darris, do you have yours ready? You're on mute.
I found mine about 15 minutes ago, so.
Ball. All right. Hi, Jennifer. So nice to see you. Why don't we do this? Do you have it, Charles?
Yeah, apparently I got it this afternoon at 3 o'clock, apparently.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see if I can pull this off here. Okay. This is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Atascadero regarding Domestic Violence Action Month, October 2021. Whereas Domestic Violence Action Month calls attention to the fact that sexual and intimate partner violence is widespread and impacts every person in Atascadero. And whereas Rise and Stand Strong officially merged on July 1st, 2021 to form Lumina Alliance, an agency that serves survivors of sexual and intimate partner violence throughout all of San Luis Obispo County. And whereas although progress has been made towards preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done. And whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by domestic violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. And whereas Lumina Alliance has provided services to more than 1,800 clients in the last year and more than 8,000 collective nights provided for shelter clients and more than 6,400 hours of counseling. And whereas Lumina Alliance has created a new social marketing campaign, redefine slow, that is focused on parents and educators of pre-teen boys in an effort to prioritize frequent and quality conversations on topics such as gender, masculinity, and consent, in an effort to prevent violence, harm, and assault in our community. And whereas the city of Atascadero strongly supports the efforts of Lumina Alliance and their efforts in encouraging every segment of society to work together to better address intimate partner violence and to help survivors connect with services. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council of the city of Atascadero, I proclaim October 2021 as National Domestic Violence Action Month. And in recognition of the important work being done by Lumina Alliance and all domestic violence prevention programs, signed Heather Moreno, mayor of Atascadero. And I would add, you know, I used to serve on the board of Rise and there was a point in time when we, there was discussion of merging with the Slow Women Shelters, which became Stand Strong. And, and now that has happened and Jenny has moved up to be the CEO of both, well, now the singular organization that assumed the role of both. So congratulations, Jane.
Thank you so much. Oh, my goodness. It's so good to see all of your beautiful faces. I haven't seen you, Charles, in so long. And Heather and Susan, I look forward to when we can be dancing again together. So thank you so much, Mayor Moreno and city council members for this proclamation. As mentioned, Lumina Alliance is the nonprofit organization that was created out of the merger that just happened in July. Our new mission is to empower those impacted by sexual and intimate partner violence through innovative advocacy, healing, and prevention programs. With our newly formed alliance, we're able to expand our reach and serve all of San Luis Obispo County as one consolidated agency. The merger also allows us to streamline services for those seeking support, ensuring their experience is easy to navigate and trauma-informed. As previously mentioned, October is Domestic Violence Action Month. This year, we are focused on the belief that eliminating gender-based violence is possible if we redefine how love is portrayed and demonstrated in our culture today. Our new redefine slow campaign provides resources for parents to engage in conversations with young men and boys about love, communication, and healthy masculinity in an effort to stop violence before it happens. We hope this month inspires our community to start conversations with their families and join us in the effort to eliminate intimate partner violence from our community. We invite you to visit redefineslow.org to learn more. Lumina Alliance is also hosting several events this month in partnership with Cal Poly Safer. You can stay updated on VAM events by following Lumina Alliance on Instagram, Facebook, or LinkedIn. And I just have to do a little aside here. There's actually two breweries in Atascadero that are serving purple beer in support of Domestic Violence Action Month. Wild Fields and Dead Oak are both, are both doing that, and we're so grateful to them for that. So please remember, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, please call 805-545-8888 to speak to one of our confidential advocates. In closing, we're just so grateful for this proclamation and the ongoing support of the Atascadero City Council. On behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, staff, and volunteers, we thank all of you for taking action this month to create our vision of a safe, thriving, and equitable community. And as a member of Atascadero community myself, I just, I'm so proud to be a part of this community and to know all of you and your dedication and all the work that you put into keeping our community safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. It's so great to have you here. Good to see you after all this time. Saying that to a lot of people nowadays, aren't we? And I, I think that the merging together, I know, can be challenging because while there's similarities, there's also differences that you need to merge. But I think that merging for a lot of organizations could be so powerful to really combine resources and not spread thin, you know, what is available. So I really, I commend both organizations for taking that step because it's a pretty bold step to take and come together. So thank you to, to all of you and to you for the work that you're doing. Good to see you tonight. Hi. And Luke, I will ask, is CR Laura on the telephone by any chance?
Yes, she just called in.
He, wonderful. All right, CR. Hopefully you are listening here, CR. So I am going to read the proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2021. Whereas the city of Atascadero is welcoming, inclusive, and dedicated to improving the quality of life for those who live, work, and visit here. And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson and was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th, the United States observes Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors came to America from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to create awareness of the contributions of people of Hispanic heritage to the American culture, including serving as civil rights leaders and community organizers, politicians, teachers, journalists, first responders, artists, healthcare professionals, athletes, inventors, entertainers, and more. And whereas Atascadero counts itself fortunate to have a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent, many whose families have lived here for generations, who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council of the city of Atascadero, I hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021 as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Atascadero. And I invite the residents of Atascadero to learn more about Hispanic culture, people, traditions, and values that have positively enriched our community. CR, I would, we'd love to hear from you.
He's coming online right now.
All right.
Council, to accept this special proclamation. You are honoring the Latinas and Latinos who have contributed to the growth and development of this beautiful country and the state of California and our magnificent central coast. I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, CR. And for those of you who don't know CR Laura, he's president of the Latino Outreach Council. He's worked with them for years and we really appreciate, appreciate all that you do and we love that you are part of our Atascadero community especially. Thank you for being here tonight.
I thank you.
Thanks. All right. And now we are on to our third proclamation and council member Darris will do the proclamation recognizing October 3rd through 9th, 2021 as Fire Prevention Week. And of course, we have our very own Chief Bryson, and I think we have others on the line with us, don't we? Maybe battalion chief, there he is. Possibly Captain Brandon Roberts, our engineer, Alex Gentili should be here, possibly Jack Light, our engineer, and firefighter Peter Rivera. So if you're all there, come on in and I will hand it over to council member Darris.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Yeah, proclaiming that Fire Prevention Week is October 3rd through 9th, 2021. Whereas the city of Atascadero is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our state. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to, wow, that's a big number, 339,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms set smoke well before you can, well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying and reported home fires in half. And whereas Atascadero residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Atascadero residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Atascadero residents will make sure their, their smoke and CO alarms, carbon, carbon monoxide alarms meet the, the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas Atascadero responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas Atascadero residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us that it is important to learn the difference, different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, carbon monoxide alarm. Now therefore, on the behalf of the city council and the city of Atascadero, I hereby proclaim October 3rd through 9th, 2021 as Fire Protection, Prevention, Prevention Week, and call upon the people of Atascadero to participate in prevention activities at home by recognizing the Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Atascadero Fire and Emergency Services. By, and then signed by our mayor, Heather Moreno.
Thank you, council member Darris. Chief Bryson, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you very much for the proclamation. By far, fire prevention is one of the, the most important things we do. So I'm happy to accept along with my Fire Station One crew, Captain Robertson, engineers, Gentili and Light, firefighter, I think Hepburn, somewhere in the back there. And then I'd also like to just bring on Battalion Chief of Community Risk Reduction, David Van Son. He is tasked with fire prevention for the community and safety, along with many other things. And he has been here almost a year with us. However, this is his first Fire Prevention Week. And he came on board with us even after, last year, we did a song for all the kids because we couldn't be there in person. So I told him we'd bring him on, but we wouldn't make him sing. So, but he did go to the schools with the crew right there at Station One. So I'll just let him speak for just a few seconds and then we'll, we can move on. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Chief Bryson and mayor and council members for, on behalf of Atascadero Fire and Emergency Service, thank you for recognizing Fire Prevention Week. And as Chief said last week, we were able to visit all the schools and educate the kids from kindergarten through fourth grade on the importance of fire prevention and safety and home exit drills and, and learning the sounds of fire prevention as well. So we would like to thank you for recognizing last week as Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you do, Chief Bryson. When you said it's one of the most important things you do, absolutely. It's one of the most important things the city does. Public safety is, is the, is, is our, is our key function. So thank you for that. And thank you to all of you for that very creative video last year. I think that's something you could probably continue to use throughout. Very creative. I'm sure keeps the kids' attention. So thank you all very much. Enjoy your evening. Thank you for being on, on call. Bye. All right. Now, we haven't had that many presentations in a while. That was a lovely time. I like it. A lot to celebrate. So now we're going to move on to our consent calendar. And all items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and can be approved in one motion if there's no member of the council or the public that wishes to pull and comment on an item. So I'll look to my colleagues and see if there's anyone wishing to pull an item on the consent calendar. Seeing that, I'll go to the webinar attendees, anybody wishing to pull an item, you can raise your hand using the raise hand icon button. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Seeing nobody wishing to pull an item, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
A move approval of the consent agenda?
A second.
Motion by council member Borbo, a second by council member Funk. Roll call, please.
Council member Borbo?
Yes.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we are on to updates from our city manager, Ms. Rickard.
Thank you, mayor. Can you see my screen at all?
Hi. Yes, there we go.
Perfect. Thank you. I want to talk about Lake Perimeter Cleanup Day. So please, everyone, save Saturday, October 23rd, for the annual Atascadero Lake Perimeter Cleanup Day. Volunteers will meet in front of the pavilion at 8:30 a.m. Coffee and donuts, everybody's worth, it's worth getting up just for the donuts, will be provided. Volunteers should bring their own work gloves and bring along tools such as loppers, rakes, clippers, et cetera. The event is co-sponsored by the city of Atascadero and the Friends of the Atascadero Lake. This is a great day. A lot of volunteers get together and do tremendous amount of work around the lake, keeping it nice for all of our visitors to be able to see, see the lake, clean up the brush, use that path around the lake. So thank you. Please come join in and help everybody out. Also this Saturday, Atascadero Waste Management will have their residential waste drop-off at Chicago Grade landfill. So if you remember, this is a new thing that's been going on for a couple of years due to COVID. It's so popular that even in spite of all of that, we are continuing with this. We used to have an annual trash cleanup day where people brought their trash to certain locations. This, this allows people to bring it straight to the, to landfill. It is for Atascadero residents only. They will be asking for proof of residency, driver's license, or whatnot. It's October 23rd through October 30th. So it is one week, eight days, you'll have an opportunity to do it from 7:30 a.m. to 3 p.m. You could deliver acceptable items to Chicago Grade landfill, personal vehicles only. You cannot bring a trailer full of stuff. Residents must unload their items themselves and only one voucher per household. The voucher must be presented. So information and vouchers are available from Waste Management. So go to their website, give them a call. They can help you out. So you can participate in this day. And we have lots of fun Halloween season activities in town. So Mark Russo may have retired from the city organization, but he is still very active in, in our community and continues to put on the wonderful, spectacular Halloween house, which is an annual tradition here in Atascadero. It's located at 7720 Cortez Avenue, off Kerberil, heading east before you get to the railroad crossing. And Mark Russo works very hard every year, putting in a ton of time and effort decorating for Halloween. And each year, his spooky displays get bigger and better. He has promised me this year's the best he's ever done. So it's something you don't want to miss. It's great. You can start driving by typically about the middle of October. So about now, you can start seeing, I'll have all the lights and the effects going. Certainly on Halloween night, it has a lot more, but it's, if you can't make it that night, drive by now, go take a peek. It's a lot of fun. Also wanted to remind everybody right here in Atascadero, right in downtown on El Camino Real, we have The Haunt, the central coast's favorite haunted house. The Haunt will be open for certain weekend days and hours beginning this Friday, October 15th at 5805 El Camino Real. They have 18 really spooky rooms featuring not-so-pleasant versions of the famous fairy tales, legends, and nursery rhymes. All of the information, including their schedule, ticket availability, and pricing, can be found online at thehauntinatascadero.com. And they strongly recommend that you buy your tickets in advance online as only a limited number available at any time or at the door. And then, of course, we have Zoo Boo at the Charles Paddock Zoo. That is also this Saturday, October 23rd, from 5 to 8:30 p.m. So have the whole family put on their best costumes for the not-too-scary event at Zoo Boo. We'll have Halloween decorations throughout the zoo, lots of fun games, a haunted house, and Halloween treats, of course. Zoo Boo is presented by Pure Pediatric Dentistry, American West Tire and Auto, Placer Title Company, and New Times. So we'll see you at the zoo on Saturday, October 23rd. It's not on Halloween, the weekend before. Come on by. And we do have Downtown Trick or Treat, which will be on Halloween. So this safe, family-friendly event will be held, held on Halloween, Sunday, October 31st, 2021, from 3 p.m. to 6 p.m. in downtown Atascadero. People and pets of all ages are welcome to come and enjoy costume contests for family, children, and pets, a hay maze, and of course, trick-or-treating. This free-to-attend event is brought to you by the Atascadero Downtown Business Improvement District. And for more information, as always, go to visitatascadero.com. We have a couple of road rehab projects. So we began rehabilitation work on San Marcos and San Gabriel roads on San Gabriel between Highway 41 and San Marcos Road and San Marcos Road from San Gabriel to Portola. If you're confused, go to the city's website and we'll have information on that. The contractor will be keeping at least one lane open for traffic during construction operations. Both lanes will be open outside of work hours. Flaggers will be directing traffic and a pilot car will be provided during intensive operations to keep traffic operating with a minimum of delays. Both of these roadways are narrow and the construction work is extensive, so delays of up to 15 minutes should be expected. We're asking residents driving these areas to be considerate and to drive carefully. Residents will be allowed to get to and from their homes, and Monita Road will be open to allow access to San Marcos Road and the surrounding neighborhoods. If there's an alternate route available to residents, it will probably be better for them to use those alternate routes during this construction. Certainly not as long of delays. And work on this project should be completed by the end of October. So while it's an inconvenience, it's wonderful to be able to get our roads fixed. It's for a short period of time. So please be patient. This road project is funded by a combination of local transportation funds and urban state highway account grants. So look for that construction and, and try and find an alternate route if you can. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any question the council may have.
Thank you. I believe we also have the Central Coast Craft Beer Festival on the 23rd.
That could be.
Yeah.
I know, you know, it's not on my list, but it's probably there. That is an event that is held here in the Sunken Gardens. I know that there are tickets available online.
Yeah, visitatascadero.com. It's noon to four in the Sunken Gardens, third annual. And so basically, on the 23rd, there is nowhere to be in the county but Atascadero. So come in the morning and help with the late cleanup. Council member Borbo and I do it quite a bit and it's fun, really. Then go to the Craft Beer Festival, then the Zoo Boo, like you were like, you're just gonna like fall into bed, done, and happy with your day. Any questions of the city manager? Council member Darris?
No, but a question for you, mayor. Are there tickets to be purchased for the beer festival that you're talking about or would?
Yep. If you're gonna visitatascadero.com.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, something that our, there is Terry, yeah, something our T-bid has participated with for, well, three years now. Terry, would you like to say a word or two?
Sure. So Central Coast Craft Beer Festival, you, you covered it very well, Mayor Moreno. It's, tickets are on sale. It's 12 to 4 on October 23rd. And they're on sale now. Get your tickets now. It will sell out. There is a cap on the number of tickets that they're going to have. But they have a ton of breweries that are participating and believe there's over 30 breweries from all over California. So definitely worth investing in that. They have a VIP ticket program as well. And if you click on the links there and visitatascadero.com under Central Coast Craft Beer Festival, it'll take you right to the event site for you to purchase tickets and look at the different levels.
Fantastic. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
And thank you, Rochelle, for an excellent report. A lot of good things going on in Atascadero from roadwork to Zoo Boo and, and Mark Russo. I mean, how awesome is that?
I know.
He's amazing. All right. Thank you so much. We are on to community forum. And this is the portion of our meeting that is reserved for persons who wish to address the council on a matter that is not on our agenda tonight, but over which we have jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we would ask that you state your name for the record. Comments made during community Comments made during Community Forum will not become a subject of discussion this evening, and will allow a maximum of up to 30 minutes for Community Forum. So with that, I will open up Community Forum, and if you are in the webinar and would like to speak, you can raise your hand. If you are on the phone, you can press star nine, and if you're listening and you haven't called in yet, the number is 805-538-2888. Looking to... Not seeing anyone, if this is your time, raise your hand. I'm not seeing any star nines, Luke, am I missing anyone?
Nope.
Okay, going once, going twice. All right, we will close Community Forum and go on to our management report. We have no public hearings tonight, so we've got one management report, and it is the El Camino Plan Corridor Study, the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. And our community development director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore, will lead us in this discussion and make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Moreno. Wow, that came up faster than I thought. We got through things very prompt and efficient tonight, so I want to share my screen and show you a little presentation about what we've been working on for a couple of years, better known as the El Camino Plan. And hopefully you can see that by now on your screen, let me get it in the presentation mode. If it'll work for me, ah, there it goes, all right. Also, very different plan, because this is one of the more comprehensive plans that I think I've ever worked on, and probably we've worked on in the city, because it not only looks at our economy, our market, but our physical place in Atascadero. And we're blessed, or are we cursed, I'm not sure, with a very, very long corridor of commercial, and it's about seven miles long. And it's something that for many years, we've tried to grasp as planners, how can we make something better of it? How can we get the head of household jobs we want, the balance between housing and commercial? And how can we make this really a big part of our community? I think we're, we're doing a wonderful job with our downtown, but this doesn't look at the downtown, it looks at other specific locations. Let's kind of go through, I'm gonna kind of guide you tonight through some of the components of this, without getting too overwhelmed about the amount of information that's in this plan, because there's certainly a lot here. And all the time, I want to also remind everyone tonight, this isn't a document that we're gonna adopt, that's gonna be set in stone, this policy. Instead, and I'm gonna refer back to this again later on, this is a recipe book. This is something that brings ideas and concepts that we can pull from to create future policies. It really began with a grant opportunity that came from the state, came from Caltrans, and we were able to get some funding to be able to pursue this study. And the funding really was geared towards transportation planning. But we also made this larger and said, hey, can we use this for land use planning and economic planning? And Caltrans allowed us to broaden this study, so not only look at transportation issues, but all of these other facets of planning. So we spent about 18 months working on this, and we did make an initial presentation to the city council in, in July of 2019. And we went back and made some changes to this plan. And the plan was actually completed right around March of 2020, right before we got into some really crazy times in California and in the country and in the world in terms of starting the pandemic. So we're picking this back up again and wanting to revisit a lot of the things that are in this plan. But really, in the end, and this is a quote that's actually in the plan, "The El Camino Plan is the result of an 18-month study of the potential to reshape and enhance El Camino real corridor to better serve and support the residents and businesses of Atascadero." It's a very comprehensive plan, it touches on a lot of things that in itself could create 10 other plans. So let's look at the goal, what was the goal? Really assess our commercial areas. I mean, that's where our commercial corridor is, we all just have that one spine in Atascadero, in addition to Highway 41. Really quantify the market potential. Look at these possible little niche areas, or what we call commercial nodes, which typically exist at these areas where you've got a freeway interchange and overpass that intersect with El Camino Real. And then from that, providing recommendations for not only land use, but development ideas too as well, things that support the economy. And then describing strategies and funding mechanisms to be able to complete some of these ideas. And then really, what's our role as a city, Atascadero's role as a commercial destination? Not only to serve our own people here, but to serve the broader region. When we first set out to look at this study, we knew we already had comprehensive plans for Del Rio, with the Del Rio specific plan. So that area was taken out of consideration. And at the same time, we were already looking at fairly comprehensive plans for our downtown revitalization and our transportation plans there, and our land use plans there, which are very separate and distinct for Atascadero. So we looked at these other two big areas that we could focus on that are in between our commercial nodes. What do we do with the in-betweens? And we separated it off into a north end and a south end, so that we could really focus the efforts on these particular areas. From that, we held a series of outreach events, did a lot of public engagement, did some of those right here at City Hall, did some of those at some other locations, and utilized other city events and other community events like Colony Days to really gather the, the public. And we got a lot of people that, that really showed up and really played an honest part, and really gave us some valuable comments. And we came up with some key themes that came out of that outreach regarding the economy and vitality, to invest resources that can attract new community-serving businesses and employment opportunities. A lot of things about character and place to create a stronger community identity along the corridor and focus commercial development in specific nodes. And also a lot about mobility. When I talk about mobility, what we talk about is mobility for not only people walking, people bicycling, but cars themselves as well. So multimodal, and that's really where the funding was focused from this study. And so obviously, we needed to look at a lot of those options to make El Camino Real a better place for all of those things. Same time, we looked at quality, how can we ensure the quality design, future development, and address blighted properties, and doing that through investment and through design standards and through just ideas of planting seeds. And also repertaining, even though the study didn't look at downtown, downtown is being the anchor and remain that cultural and commercial heart of the city. And it's pretty amazing, when I look back, just even in the last five to six years that I've been with the city, that our city council and our city team has done an amazing job at the downtown, it's really, it's really great, the amount of things that have been accomplished and are coming along. So the document actually completed in March 2020. It did get printed in a nice, big 11 by 17 size, it's kind of, I'll call it a coffee table guide, a coffee table book. We did incorporate a lot of public and city council input, a lot of the stakeholder interviews went into it. Draft market assessment, which isn't attached to this plan, really went into formulating a lot of the ideas that are in the plan and helped us identify the opportunity areas. And then lastly, of course, a mobility assessment, which is really about transportation. So as an outline, this report's got concepts and suggestions for future development standards. It's got ideas for land use and zoning all along the corridor to enhance both the economy and other land uses, even housing as well. And then talks about potential enhancements within the right of way, it's talked about actual traffic designing things, how to landscape the right of way, and things that suggest ideas to really increase the aesthetics and the safety and the access. That was the idea. El Camino is challenging in some spots for that multimodal transportation. It's challenging in some locations to cross El Camino and to get around El Camino if you don't have a car. One of the images I did want to pull out and just illustrate here in the presentation was sort of this idea, what would happen 10 years from now if we decided to create policies that implemented some of these things? We would have a place where we have primary job notes, and they really focused on the commercial park zone that's on the north end of city, that's that blue color, where right now, you know, we have potential properties, in fact, we have some construction plans in now that implement just this plan. It's really interesting, we've got a nice commercial project that's got this experiential business and office use. We also have the Del Rio exchange plans that are being done at Del Rio that are doing very similar things, although not shown in this thing. But what would happen if all these things were implemented? We'd have a job area, we'd have workforce housing opportunities, and we'd establish our primary commercial nodes. And we'd have some good, you know, ideas for how these things would come together. This is sort of that graphical illustration that really focuses on what's the vision that this plan carries. One of the things we did report out to council on a year or two ago was the market conditions analysis, which was done in concert with this plan. It really looked at the background, what are we dealing with in our city in terms of where are the job generators, what is our jobs and housing balance? Nothing new, nothing dramatic that we learned here, but it was essentially reaffirming what we know about our city that we are a bit off in our jobs and housing balance, we are housing-rich, we are job poor. What, where are, we are underserved in terms of a commercial availability. I can't go to a store and buy a pair of socks. So we do have a need, you know, we do have a couple of grocery stores, but we may not have the exact grocery stores we want. What this study looked at is where can these things fit, what's the market potential? And then it dovetailed those recommendations in with the actual physical planning recommendations that created these recipes, these ideas that we can pull from it. I like to think of this recipe book idea, because when you have a recipe book, you open it up, you may pull the recipe out, you might cook that meal, but you may also season it a little bit and do something different with it, and create your own thing with it. And that's how the El Camino Plan is. Think of it that way. Another quote I pulled out, because this is really the catalyst, and I think it's something we're gonna bring back to larger discussions to you at a later date about restaurants. Because they're the key thing. Restaurants and drinking places, the analysis finds that there's a substantial amount of leak spending. In other words, means, hey, people are going out to dinner, they might be going somewhere else some of the time. And we found that we could support between 38,000 to 67,000 or so square feet of new restaurants and bars, that's a lot, considering a single restaurant might only be a couple thousand square feet. But what we really found, and what we've really begun to latch on to, is restaurants and bars are key components of the emerging emphasis on experience-oriented shopping to compete against online retail. And I think I've mentioned this before in prior presentations, that that is still and will be continued to grow to be the thing, the experiential. What does that mean? It means going out somewhere to not only to go shopping, but to eat and dine, entertain, all in one particular location or region where maybe you're not getting back into your car and driving somewhere else. And that's the key thing, otherwise, really, you're just gonna order it online. And so restaurants really are the catalyst for that. It's what we're working on substantially in our downtown to really make happen, but we're also working on creating these places where it's attractive, and I think the public investments that the city has been doing and that we continue to pursue with our downtown infrastructure enhancement plan will be the catalyst that makes these things happen. And what's, uh, this plan really came up with is a series of economic strategies. And these also got turned into some of the land use and circulation strategies, they carry forward and blend together. And so some of these economic strategies that you see here really are about zoning and land use and physical improvements, such as encouraging infill development and the reuse of the existing underutilized sites. How can you do that? The plan doesn't give us terrific detail of that, it just tells us, hey, these are some of the things we need to focus on. As you get further into your general plan next year, and doing a new set of zoning regulations, and continuing to look at economic development incentives, we can begin to grasp some of these concepts. Focusing on placemaking, we've talked about that in the last couple of years quite a bit. That's critical, and I think the city's doing a lot of investment already in that. Again, targeting the commercial park zone, that's the zone, that's the area in between El Camino and Highway 101, the north end of city, where we already are receiving investment in that zone for centers that can support head of household jobs. It's really good. And then lastly, investment in the public realm to create a pedestrian-friendly and aesthetically pleasing environment. I don't think anything speaks louder than the downtown infrastructure enhancement plan that we're already doing, but again, spreading, you know, much smaller format, some of those things to other areas in the city in the future as time and funding allows. Always having to look also at streamlining our development process. We're always running into stumbling blocks from changes in state laws and changes in things that, that guide stormwater, for example, and other things, we're always having to find ways to navigate that, that maze. And again, it's strongly recommended here, it's looking at zoning for streamlined development process. Modifying uses in the existing districts to ensure compatibility, and that means looking again comprehensively at our zoning. And again, that's something that'll happen with our general plan. Been 20 years since we've looked at it, it's time to take a fresh look at it. And what makes sense today, based on the economy, based on the physical creation of our city, and based on on what the certain trends are. And then looking at how we can create larger parcels, smaller parcels that are all chopped up does make it challenging. How can you get those together? How can you get property owners to pull those together? That's a challenge. And so there's some other things that we'll have to continue looking at. And again, utilizing enforcement when we can, we talk about enforcement, we talk about really just talking to people and saying, hey, we can help you advertise your business, you don't have to put feather flags out there. You don't have to make the, the city look a certain way. We can help you in different ways, and in fact, a quality-looking business is really gonna do better for the overall economic environment. So that's what that last statement really talks about. So what, what really came out of this, and what's in your staff report, is a series of, I think there's five land use and circulation strategies. Don't want to bore you too much, I do want to touch on these real quickly, though. And again, it rehashes what I just mentioned, examining the land use for each commercial zone to really target certain types of business, creates certain types of flexibility. But again, looking at certain zoning districts like our commercial retail district, which we'll look at with our general plan update, and ask ourselves, is there too much of a wide range? Does it water down those districts? Is it too much flexibility? And then again, looking at that commercial park zone. But back to development standards, we've got to maintain flexible development standards. That means height, that means setbacks, that means parking, that's flexible, that means all of those things that go into a development package, making it flexible. And this plan suggested we look at key areas to do a comprehensive plan. The general plan can do that, but I think there was some mention here about, do you need to adopt a specific plan to make things more flexible in a certain area where you have preset development standards and streamlined development processes? Maybe, that was just one of the suggestions in there. And then again, really looking at the mid-block locations that are not at these prime commercial nodes. When I talk about prime commercial nodes, those are places like Santa Anselmo El Camino Real, Santa Rosa El Camino Real, Curb Real El Camino Real, and certainly Highway 41 El Camino Real. But what's in between those areas where we have our smaller strip malls and we have our sort of underutilized parcels? Are there areas in there that are pockets that should have a different mixture of uses? Maybe it's mixed-use, maybe it's residential above commercial, maybe it's a project like Grand Oaks where there's the smaller homes. These are things that make sense in these transitions to try and enrich the quality and appearance of those areas where there's very limited commercial viability. Because you want to keep your commercial uses in these concentrated clusters, understanding you need a job area, you need a retail area, you need a entertainment area, but keeping those clusters together really helps strengthen, and I think that's what this study tried to do when you've got seven miles long of a corridor. And then again, it comes down to consistency, safety, and good aesthetics, obviously looking quality. How will buildings orient El Camino? What does that mean? Well, when you've got buildings that are set a long way back, and they're a quarter mile back from the street with a sea of parking, and it's all you know, a property's only using 25% of that parking, that's a problem, and there's probably a different way that property could be developed, pull those buildings closer, have more attractive landscaping and pedestrian connections. And you increase the aesthetics, which brings up the property value, and you're utilizing underutilized property. A lot of the older shopping centers we used to see just had a sea of asphalt, just a sea of parking. We don't need that anymore, they're not seeing that same kind of demand, it's different. So a lot of these places you go, and I say Bonds is not that way, Bonds is full all the time, but a lot of these other centers, you might go to them, and there's just a big parking lot and a lot of undeveloped property. And the shopping center near Smart and Final is a prime example of that, where there's actual empty parcels out there that could develop and need to be enhanced to better orient El Camino Real. And really support that connectivity. And lastly, just making El Camino feel safer and more inviting and match the unique character that people love about our community. And that means trees, shade, safe pro- And that means trees, shade, safe crossings, lighting, parking, safe walking and biking. Now, it's funny when I when I read all these things and I look at that. It reminds me again of the downtown infrastructure enhancement plan. Those are the things we're doing. Now, we can't do that across the entire city because we need areas where vehicles can get through quickly. But there are other things that can be done to enhance that aesthetic appearance. Now, what I'm going to show you is just a quick uh rendering. Because I don't want to keep showing you words to have you fall asleep. So I'd rather have you look at a pretty picture for just a moment. But this is one of several renderings that the consultant put together that really show. Really in a conceptual version of how certain areas could. Could develop. Um, this is one of the shopping centers. This is the Kmart Center. And just showing, gosh, you know, you've got a big parking lot out there. You only need about twenty percent of that parking really. And if there were additional buildings out there. On that property. That created a sense of place, that created something experiential. That is certainly an option. And the idea here is to plant the seed so that these property owners see these ideas and concepts and realize that. There's a lot more potential in some of these properties and they could serve. A great variety of land uses and be very attractive for our community. And all of those concepts really came along with some ideas that really kind of break the ice and plant the seed for. All kinds of good architectural themes and and designs for the districts. Key features such as authentic detailing or suggested consistent rhythms of landscape. And then really enhancing the landscape at major intersections to bring out those commercial nodes. Again, these are all just ideas. In our in our recipe book. So what do we do with all this? How do we pull this all together? Well, we don't have to worry about it too much because we don't actually have to just. Take everything in here and do something with it. But we do need to keep this book alive because there's a lot of good stuff in it. And this plan is a a foundation for future city action. Future city action, I underline because. We can't take action on all of these things, but we can look at this to pull from. Um, and we can keep pulling from the recipe book. It's not a policy document and it's really an informational tool that can support policymaking. Um, so at this time, this is kind of what they've left us. We can. Take ideas from it. There's not a lot we can do to change the document now, but it certainly is a good. I'll say again, recipe book for the future. So at this point, I'm gonna stop talking and and be available to answer your questions and and take any input on this and and thoughts about. What we can do with this document in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh, why don't we do questions, uh, and then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back and just. You know, there's no action item, but any input or thoughts that we have, uh, will go in that direction. So let's start with any questions that. We might have of the plan, uh, starting with Councilmember Dara's.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh. Phil, a question that I have that came up when I was reading through this, and as you mentioned, you know, our commercial corridor. El Camino being about seven miles long. Has, you know, great potential for really watering things down, spread all up and down that street. We have, you know, there's, I mean, there's different commercial, there's commercial park, commercial retail service and so on and so forth. But looking just at the commercial retail zone. Is that something that can be broken up into different sort of subcategories and you can say like an area be. Between forty one and Curb Real or or some segment of that will be commercial retail one and and. Take only some subsets out of this and say that's what you to to break it down and say, um. You can only build certain types of projects there and do this up and down. El Camino, because like I said, you know, identifying land uses that work best together. Is that how this is, you're envisioning this working?
Sort of, yeah, that's one of the ideas and concepts that can be gleaned from this. Um, on one hand, you don't want to have restrictive zoning. That turns away what you want in your community. But the other hand. You don't want land uses that. Reduce the aesthetics and turn away having a good economy, good head of household jobs and good restaurants. So you've got to create this theme that says, hey. That's what general zoning is about. Hey, this block is really good for X and this block is really good for Y. And what this tried to do is create, hey, here's where you're needing, and your need really is in light industrial, right? Business parks and office park type things because that's where the jobs are. And you need to create more land for that. And, you know, in a way, I think the authors thought, gosh, maybe you're over retail. But when they thought of that, they thought of. You know, certain types of retail that have gone to internet now, but there's other types of retail. That we may not have enough of. So it's hard to say that, but certainly, yeah, that's one way it could go. And when we get into our general plan update, that's the heart of that discussion. And we can take some tidbits out of this. And take some tidbits out of our new outreach that we do for our general plan. And our new analysis with our new consultant that we will hire here shortly. And really put all that together to create that planet and come up with what's the best fit.
Okay, that I I think that answers my question. I was just wondering if we were, if we were gonna just make subcategories, could, you know, to bring. I don't know if I can answer the question exactly the way I want, but to 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 find the land uses that work together, make sure that they're in a certain node. Instead of at opposite ends or wherever it is, like you said, spread spread out and watered down. I mean, if if we, I don't know if that's good planning or not, but it seems, you know, on the surface, it seems like to me would be a good idea. So that way it it helps other businesses kind of, you know, work together. So, anyhow, thank you.
Councilmember Funk.
Um, yes, um, several things. Can can you talk first just a little bit more about how? This work feeds into the process that we're going to be doing of the for the general plan and. The really high level through timing of the general plan process so that people know what to expect.
Sure, this is a little bit of a background analysis. It's a little bit of an economic analysis. And it's a little bit of what we're really going to get into with the general plan now, because this looks at. Kind of a just a certain part of your city, but it also looks at a cross section of your economy. And the general plan. Is a little more, is even broader scope than this because it looks at your entire community and your infrastructure availability. Along with your circulation and your land. And your safety and and noise and all those other things. So this this kind of informs parts of it. And we can, again, pull from these ideas in here just to help feed us and help, you know, bring us up to speed as we go through our general plan. But when we do our general plan, we already have a set of policies, many of which we may find are still valid. But we also have new zoning that we want to look into to invite, you know. What we want to build our community into in the future. So. This certainly uh helps break the ice and helps be that recipe book to to contribute to that effort.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you. There, I'm intrigued at the notion that's in here about uh developing more cohesive. Vision for particular sections of our very long commercial strip. And in part, making it easier for businesses to. To go with that vision and providing an incentive by having a plan for it in advance, a specific plan or a master plan. For an area. So that when somebody wants to do some, something that fits with that plan. It can go through very quickly. Could you talk more about how that actually works?
Typically, that works in concert with having an applicant on board. Let's say, for example, somebody owns a large commercial property or more commercial properties together. And um they want to work with us as a city to say, hey, we want to pre-design out a whole concept. And so that we can streamline our development from here on out. We want to do all of our environmental, we want to. Have a base site plan and we want to understand how it will be served by infrastructure and utilities. And we want to pre-approve certain land uses so that we can build this out. A good example of that was the Del Rio specific plan. It didn't come out the way we wanted to because the main driver of that specific plan. Left. Um, but. That's how that typically would work. We'd work in concert with a property owner to help them. See the visions and reality of their property, consistent with our general plan and consistent with our council's goals.
How does that work in a, I mean, we don't have that many areas like Del Rio that are uh naked land. How does that work in areas where um there may be some develop, some development, some older. Older developments that may maybe um looking to transition to become more profitable and that kind of thing.
Well, the city can proactively create a specific plan or a focus area of the general plan. It focuses on a specific corridor. Even if it covers multiple property owners and all those property owners don't. Agree a hundred percent with it. Typically, you like to have them on board because they can contribute their ideas and their dreams to it. But the city can still go ahead and do that and bring multiple property owners together, bring them to the table. And just come up with a concept and a specific plan. Because what that can often do is create investment. It can increase property values. And it can promote a flexibility that you want to have and encourage certain things to happen and kind of plant the seed. So that that is one way that can be done. And uh, in other cases, I mean, we do have some big areas in the city that are empty blank slates. When you look at the Kmart shopping center and you look at the properties across the street from that, that are zone commercial where triple seven auctions is basing their. Their activities right now. It's a pretty big commercial chunk. That is worthy of probably some careful specific planning so that when you look forward ten years from now. That they have a guide to follow, um, because it's probably one of our, besides the Del Rio properties, which are already moving forward now. Probably one of our second biggest large commercial areas.
Great, thank you. Um, there's a lot of, there's some good analysis in this plan. With regard to what's the market demand in our area for various aspects. To what extent did that go completely out the window? Oh, with the changes right by the pandemic. And um, how does that compare with current vacancy levels that we have now? Because we're aware that there are a lot of vacant spaces. Um, and also, you know, on a market demand, do they line up?
Well, yeah, there's sort of, there's two, two questions you've asked here. First of all, did we throw everything out the window with the pandemic? No. Things kept going much further, much faster in the direction they were already going. And that direction is an internet based community, just like we're on the internet right now. So. So we're doing things virtually now a lot, in including purchasing virtually. And that has only increased tenfold. I I won't say exactly tenfold, but it's increased a lot. But when they did the market analysis, things were already moving very rapidly in that direction. The pandemic just accelerated it. So that's the only real. Significant change. The experiential land use is still highly desirable. Things like, you know, the the recent Chanel uh beer garden that just opened up is incredibly popular. That's an experiential land use where you're hanging out with friends outside. And um, that is, that's where they hit the nail on the head with that analysis and that's continuing to move forward. Now, um, sorry, I lost my train of thought. What was your second piece of that same?
We're very aware of vacancy rates locally and also, you know, there's, there's need, but do they, you know, do these. Those things line up with each other or do we need to be thinking about different kinds of spaces?
They do, but now when we talk about vacancies in a Tascadero, it's a little bit of a different thing. There are certain um. Things that we have no space for at all, and that's the light industrial, which is um. A tenant space that may be four, five thousand square feet that has a roll up door and an office. There's none of that available and it's in such high demand. There's also no restaurant space available. It's really difficult to take an old. Outdated building that has old utilities and and small restroom and turn it into a restaurant. That's a substantial investment. It's really expensive. So we might see a few vacant buildings in our downtown. Uh, one of those, uh, two of them actually need substantial seismic retrofitting and reconstruction. Before they can even be occupied and a couple others need full tenant improvements, which can be very costly. So the price of doing that. Compared to the price that you can get per square foot in other buildings doesn't match up right now. And that's one of the things this study hit on. And it's still very true right now. Um, the lease base for certain properties is so low that it makes it difficult to build new or to do significant tenant improvements. Luckily, we're seeing a lot of buildings do that anyway, and we're seeing a lot of new construction. So automatically, even since this plan was born. The values of properties have gone up substantially and some of these vacancies have filled in, but they do match up. We we, I mean. Well, should I say they match up? They don't really match up. Actually, it's the opposite. We don't have vacancies in the area where we have demand. We have vacancies in the area where there's less, less demand. And you can't really use the the Kmart property as an example because it's locked up because it's under lease. By Kmart for a couple more years. And if it was available, it would have already been occupied, which would have triggered the occupancy of the vacant spaces that surround it. Um, and the other buildings that we have in our downtown are. Are are trapped because of their condition or ownership issues. So I think the few small spaces we have, some in Colony Square and some scattered about El Camino. Are too small or just not perfect for the land use desires that are really out there. So we don't have that perfect. Perfect fit, um, yeah. And that's why they're still seeing a lot of new construction and you're seeing new investment at Del Rio. To accommodate that fit for where the need is. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Um, a couple more things. In the. In this uh plan, one of the things that they talk about as a goal is street activation. Could you talk about what that means?
Yes, street activation is where you've got. Things happening. Think of a, think of a thriving downtown where there's people walking around and there's people driving. There's people eating outside, uh, there's people bicycling down the street. And you have a lot of activity and you've got, not only you've got. Places to eat, because you've got places for entertainment, you've got places to shop, you've got an active. Uh, neighborhood as compared to an inactive street. Uh, would be something where you've got several vacant storefronts in a row, or you have land uses that have no. Uh, customer visitation or very low customer visitation or they're closed at night. Those are inactive. So that's the difference. Activating streets is having a mixture of uses, having some. Maybe mixed use upstairs and having pedestrian activities and having good linkages and having good aesthetics. It creates an active space which has so many other good side effects to it as well.
Yeah, okay. And then then last, um, I'm. I'm intrigued by the fact that as we look at this, that there are. Some sections of El Camino Real that have the traffic demand that requires the current width of this very wide street. But there are other sections that don't because of, you know, of the way traffic moves between. Our one oh one interchanges, I presume. Can we use the Zone Haven um work that we're doing in traffic modeling? To test, you know, or or other things to test out. Say whether we can really afford to do something different with certain sections of this. And still make sure that everybody can evacuate our community properly um in the event of a disaster. And that traffic flows at major intersections, which are a challenge for people now, don't get worse.
Certainly, yeah, certainly can use those metrics. And in fact, we're doing some additional studies with that right now. In light of Senate Bill nine and in light of our accessory dwelling policies because we're. We're being forced to be able to consider additional densities in our west side. And in our other residential neighborhoods. So we're looking at Zone Haven, we're looking at our emergency evacuation routes. To try and get a better handle on where deficiencies might occur and where we might need to limit density. But at the same time, that can help help inform us about. These other factors and where, where there might be room to be able to to utilize additional right away for. Other aesthetic improvements and things like that in the in the future. And I think our new circulation plan can evaluate that when it's informed by. The additional transportation studies. We, you know, we, we went through that exercise at length in our downtown and we're great there, but there certainly are areas where. You've got to get out of a neighborhood and to the freeway. You've got to get out of a neighborhood and to forty one. And we certainly don't want to. Restrict those neighborhoods' access as an emergency evacuation route to get into those areas.
Okay, thank you.
Other council questions?
I was waiting for Heather, but if she's not raising her hand, I'll have a couple of questions.
Go right in.
So Phil, um, um. On page sixty six, these kind of relate. On page sixty six. Um, there's comments about, oh, there's two comments, uh, but one is about allowing for. Residential as an incentive to redevelop lighted uh properties or consolidate lots. What I was curious about, because you've talked, you know, well before this study about the um. About us having so many small lots that it's hard to do any thing significant sometimes. What incentives by zoning or otherwise can the city offer? To potential investors to say, to make it easier for them to consolidate properties. To build the kind of things we'd like to see in some of these areas. Um, this specifically mentions perhaps allowing some residential where it might not currently be allowed. Can we do zoning that allows something like some residential to occur, but only if it's on? You know, some consolidated lots. Lots.
Certainly, yeah, we have, we have that sort of control. Uh, we can also offer. Uh additional density, additional height, reduce setbacks, um. Uh changes to how their property development standards might be. Uh, got to be careful with this one, sometimes reduce parking. Um, where it gets difficult is really getting into financial incentives. That's where we have the most challenging time for a lot of reasons. But certainly there's ways that can happen that can try and get property owners to work together um to make a project happen. Uh, in the end, it really comes down to. The desire and workability of of a variety of property owners, but areas where we talk about that. Change in land use and consolidation. Think of, for example, the area just outside of our downtown zone as you head north on El Camino. Um, there's a number of residential uses already there in a commercial district. Where you've got very narrow, shallow properties. And you're facing the freeway, you don't have this sort of commercial vibrancy. We have a little bit of that on the south end of town too, and some of these pockets that are in between where there's. Just a really narrow commercial corridor. It's backed by housing on one side, El Camino right up at the front on the other side. And you just don't have enough synergy there to create this vibrant commercial area. So what do you do with that? And you think. Gosh, if we had a a mixed use project there that was a couple stories tall and you brought the storefront closer to the street and. Maybe you had parking down below or in the back and you had some flexibility, you give out a density they could build and you can consolidate some lots together. That was kind of the general thought when that statement was put in there.
Along those lines, on page one twenty-two, it says um the very last sentence uh. When it's talking about future opportunity areas and sites, it says the city should initially focus on one opportunity area. And, you know, it it broke down these different areas and you'd mentioned one of them specifically, that is the. Kmart shopping center along with the triple seven auction. Uh, you are not the one they use fully, but the one on the corner of San and Seminole North and El Camino. Have you looked at at these areas and if so, are you? Do you have one that you would recommend that the city focus on first, or do you agree with that strategy in the first place?
I think I agree with that philosophy because we don't want to water down our resources too much. I think it's nice to say, hey, let's cut out this area. Let's engage the property owners and let's see if they're interested in master planning for the future, knowing that, you know, maybe some of them have a successful business right now. But maybe ten years from now, what do they envision doing with that property? And we, we could help them. Design and market and plan for the future and increase their property value by doing that. You know, maybe that's a really good partnership. Um, that property is all zone commercial retail on that side, on the east side of El Camino Real. It's kind of sloped there right now. Um, where they're utilizing that for an expansion of triple seven and combining that with some other properties, you've got a pretty big. Um, area there that, you know, maybe it's not best for retail and then the likes of going to the store and shopping, but maybe that becomes something different that has. A land use that that can create head of household jobs where you've got. Light industrial and roll up doors, or maybe it's something different than that um that has mixed use.
Thank you. Well, the, yeah, the report talks about office parks. And that Tascadero could seem competitive for office parks. Because of, you know, lower lease rates, et cetera. And, you know, while office parks don't generate on, you know, retail sales tax or anything like that, they do. Provide jobs that would keep people in town, support restaurants, that sort of thing. If we agreed that, you know, attracting like office parks, especially things like, you know, research and development, it mentions. Um, high tech things, what kind of incentives could we offer to do that? And I was struck, by the way, I was riding a bicycle around Santa Cruz last week and was on this one street. And there were, there were numerous, you know, like biotechnology, kind of health to play, you know, manufacturers. And it was very interesting, all in this little stretch and there were all kinds, there were laboratories and there were. Sounded like research type places, all concentrated on a single street. And I'm not sure, you know, how they got that. But, you know, it's kind of thing that we're interested in, but I'm wondering what kind of incentives can we offer? To property owners or prospective developers and or businesses to say, hey. Uh, to make them feel like, wow, I I really got to check out a Tascadero and consider it as a place to put my business.
I don't know if it's actually just offering incentives that really makes it happen, because if we can offer incentives all day long. And that may not be the trigger that makes it happen. What really makes those things happen is that those businesses want. To be there or they have to want to be there. And so what I mean by that is you've got to have the place making. And the restaurants and the quality environment first. And as long as you've got the land available and you've got zoning that allows for what they want to do, they're going to come. It's challenging for us to create incentives unless we think of programs to reduce development impact fees, but then we're taking money away from something else that we desperately need. We can easily design plans for flexible development standards. But that may not be enough. It it really comes down to. Making other things happen. And as we continue to build our downtown and and enhance other things. And create more housing and opportunities for restaurants and things to do. It's going to naturally happen. And I think that's where. Our efforts need to to come into play. And I think a lot of this El Camino plan gets into that. And we hope that our general plan policies in the future get into that as well. That that's really the best we can do.
Yeah, it becomes a chicken and egg thing though, because you you want to attract certain kinds of businesses and they literally the first. Thing they're thinking about is, yeah, but where are we going to go to lunch? And and then, but the restaurants are like. Well, we can't necessarily build here unless there's more people here working during the day. In other words, there are more jobs. And housing doesn't necessarily do it because. Most of the time you build another house in a Tascadero and you you're employing, you're you're housing somebody who's going to go to work in San Luis Obispo.
Yeah, it is, it is an egg thing. It's balancing thing, but.
Yeah, so I, I mean, you know, I understand what you're saying and it's a good point that incentives by themselves. Wouldn't be enough to bring it, but I'm concerned how we get over the chicken and egg dilemma of of place making. That attracts businesses, but how you do place making without, you know, businesses and jobs in town.
I know, it's tough. I think, I think we're making, like I said, we're making great strides in that endeavor. And we just have to hope that we continue to do that way, go that way, not only with our downtown, but at Del Rio as well and what's on the books now.
Thank you. I think that's uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Borbo. Uh, Mayor Tim Newsom.
Oh, my question is kind of a broad one. Um. It seemed like we had a lot of momentum when we first looked at this and we had all these great ideas. How far back do you think we are set by COVID? Cause I feel like everything's kind of come to a standstill. Hope.
Some things have changed permanently with COVID. Some things are already reverting back. And so. I don't think we've lost a lot. We lost a little bit of time and that's why we put this thing. On ice for a few months because um there was some very significant changes to our economy and our conditions. Um, and some of those changes, the outdoor dining scene, uh the internet sales and things that. Will have lasting effects, but generally the the trends that were identified in here and the economic analysis that was done here. Are very accurate and will continue to be accurate. So I don't think we've lost a lot of that. Um. We've certainly had to redirect a lot of our resources lately to try and make things happen. We did lose, I mean. We lost steam on some substantial projects that were going to happen um right before COVID came. We had. At least two large new hotels, one in our downtown and one at the Home Depot Shopping Center. We had two um. Development projects in downtown. So about four or five projects have vanished entirely that that may not come back to the table. Um, and that's why Colony Square sort of sits idle. It's it's damaged from that. But in terms of what was in this plan. And what was being contemplated, it's not derailed and hasn't changed. And that's all still very valid.
So the progression on the the Kmart area, you know, we had a. Few tenants that kind of backed out and we haven't locked into that. We kind of thought that that was going to be one of the um. Beginning developments that could become the anchor and kind of evolve from there and kind of move down. Uh, El Camino and Del Rio and that they develop kind of around the same time. Do you think that that Kmart development and potential uh interest in that is still right?
That's a challenge. I've been talking with that property owner in the past year and. The difficulty of unraveling Kmart's lease has become very challenging and it's been discouraging to the potential tenants. He had uh two to three really good tenants for that center. And he kept putting him on hold and on hold until he could unwind Kmart and. Now those tenants are deciding to build elsewhere, luckily in a Tascadero. But not at the Kmart center. So until that issue gets resolved with the lease. It's going to be challenging to do anything with the Kmart property. Um, but it still will happen when that lease gets unraveled, just like when we had. Um, a jack in the box for many years in our downtown that sat vacant and they were paying a lease on it. It's the same scenario. Um, and when that gets unraveled, things will move rapidly. It's a very desirable property. Um, so it's not ending forever. It's just that. We are um in the crosshairs of a of a corporate lease that's holding us back.
How many years is left on that lease?
I believe it might be two and a half to three, two and a half years. Yeah.
Director, kind of along the lines of what my previous two colleagues were were asking, um. I think we've got some really good examples of this type of thing happening. One where a private developer. Um, being Mr. Zappus and and his company, they took, you had referred to the. The uh jack in the box that had been that long, that leased for so long, but not only that, there was the bank. And they were unwilling to let go of that property because of, you know, their own issues. They didn't think they could get enough for it. You had the Hov property, you had Gong, you had. You had these various owners that all had their own issues and you had. Somebody who was incentivized enough in what he wanted to do to come along and pull all that together. I still remember the day. That Larry Weisong told me that it happened. I was like, are you kidding me? And how exciting that was and how exciting that has been for our city in the last uh just a few years. Of course, the crowning jewel of that being La Plaza. The other example we have of that is something that the city really had a hand in, and this is before my time. Uh, but the Rite Aid Center. That was, you know, a bunch of different property owners in there and kind of a. Yeah, you know, not, it 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 needed a facelift. It wasn't. Uh, an attractive center. And so I know the city took a real role in in doing that and pulling those property owners together. So my question really being beyond uh just making the zoning available and saying, hey, here it is. How do you see the city having a role? Because you know, you know so much, Phil. You you know so many of the property owners, you know, the stories of the businesses, of the owners themselves. There's a lot of, lot of things that you know. So when you look at some of those areas. You know, where is there opportunity for us to come in? And talk to some of these owners and say, here's, here's the vision, like, we're not going to force anything on you. But here's a vision that we want to help put together and and lift everybody up.
Yes.
Where do you see that being possible within this plan or or, you know, somehow fitting within?
Sure, and there's, there's several areas. And uh now that I've got some additional help here at the city, I think it's key to have these conversations. Uh, with property owners. In fact, right, you know, as we look at um. The um Smart and Final Shopping Center, it's got a ton of space out there. Next door also at the Food for Less Shopping Center, there's a ton of land out there. That even if those stores stay just as they are. Could be developed with a whole different array of of land uses that really help kind of implement some of these key features. So there's two big properties already and then um. You look at the Kmart Shopping Center and the triple seven auction property right there, there's another big area. That has ample opportunity. And then we look at some of these areas that are in between where I mentioned, um, there's a possibility of different land uses where we have. The really narrow commercial corridor backed by residential. What else do you do with that land? So. There are several of them actually, and um I think there's tremendous potential.
Which ones? And and I know Councilmember Borbo asked you this, you may not have an answer to it, and so I might be pressing again and you can tell me you don't have an answer. And so I'm curious, do you see one of those areas where you're like, you know what, I know enough. To say, hey, I can go talk to these, to these business owners, these property owners. And we might be able to get something going in the not too distant future. Do you see that potential or? Is this more like, hey, here's some great ideas, but we really need to work it through the general plan? Um, I I think all of us would kind of like to see something sooner, yet I know we're stretched, we're very. We only have so much capacity, uh but it's worth asking.
I think there's a lot of potential to the properties around Santa and Selmo. And not only the Kmart Shopping Center, but the properties across the street currently being utilized by triple seven. And there's a vacant property next door to that that has an old abandoned house on it that's also in the commercial district. And so there's a couple of property owners right there that if we bring them to the table. And let them know of what the potential is for the future there and the value that's in that. And the flexibility that we can offer and some of the things that we can help them do. That would probably be a discussion that's ripe to have.
Okay.
Um, because you're not dealing, I mean, these other properties I mentioned, such as uh Smart and Final and Food for Less. You know, they have corporations that deal with those properties and yeah, there's a lot of non-compete issues and it's difficult, more difficult to unravel. Um, but whereas this other, these other properties surrounding Kmart, they don't have those issues and there really isn't an established land use there. And there's just interim uses or vacant uses on those properties. And they may not realize the full potential of what's going on there.
Okay.
Now, it does come along with with, you know, needing to deal with some transportation deficiencies that we currently have at the San uh and Selmo on ramp. But we can get through that and that that's what long-term circulation planning is about.
Yeah. So if there were any low fring, low hanging fruit, that would be it then. Uh, one other question on page one twenty-three. Uh, they talk about the potential of a relocation fund. Which, you know, sounds lovely, uh but that would be, you know, obviously for, you know, I also think about. I think prior to, you know, redevelopment going away, the city, and again, this is before my time, but. My recollection is the city had thought about, you know, using some of that money to incentivize some of the businesses around the park. Uh, to be able to move so we could create something more of a vibrant place making down there. That said, I'm wondering, you know, they talk about loans or or grant money. And and just curious if, do we have any ideas where potentially a relocation fund could? You know, could start to grow from, uh whether it's for our downtown or or any other businesses if we say, hey, this is really important to the city. And to the vibrancy of what we're trying to do with our economy um. Is, do you see any, you know, possibility for creating and growing a fund like that? Or is that something we'd really have to do some legwork on?
It's gonna take a little bit of legwork, but it certainly has potential. And if we're able to unlock some funds from our, the American Relief uh Act to the ARP. That would be one place where we could say, hey, if we could set aside some funds where we could do either assistance with relocation. Or even a grant program where we could set up a grant to say, hey, we're going to help a certain category of businesses in a certain location. If you come in with a good business plan, we're going to help you directly fund this through a city grant through that particular program. Or with relocation of an office to a conforming area to really help us out. And that, that is something that some cities use. And their economic development side, they use that and they have a fund where they can get into that to help with these sort of. You know, significant or almost even emergency, you know, economic development activities. The thing is. Are, a lot of our funding is very, well, everything's allocated. So if we start setting up a fund, where's that money going to come from? And what else, what else is it going to take away from? Right now, we have a lot of funds that we're trying to. Scrape together to get our downtown infrastructure and handsome plan done and uh our general plan for that matter. And um we're also um trying to get a lot of other things going at the same time. In terms of city services. So it's, it's quite a challenge. So. If we had the money, I could certainly s- suggest ideas on on how to do this program. But it's, it's, it's having the funds.
Yeah, certainly. As you said, ARP. A- as you said, ARP is what was kind of, I had written down, it was in the back of my mind, so uh just curious about that. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. I I think that might be it for questions. Uh and so why don't we do this? Why don't we go to um public comment now? I need to, could you take that down, the the screen down?
I'm trying to uh
Okay.
Get that down now, my button, oh, there it is.
There we go, now you get back to my titties here.
Yeah, there we are.
All right, no problem. Thank you. So now, if we could go to, uh go ahead and open up public comments. So if there's anyone here in the webinar that would like to uh speak on this item, uh please go ahead and raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Uh when you come on, please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, the El Camino Plan? Come on, folks, no one? This is, this is kind of exciting. Real excited.
They're speechless. They're absolutely speechless.
That's it, that's it. Uh Luke, I'm not seeing anyone on the phone, but could you let me know if I'm missing that?
Uh, nope, no one wishing to comment.
No one should comment. All right. Well, going once, going twice, the El Camino Plan?
I think if they had these handouts, they'd be really excited, Phil. You went through
I know, they're very pretty. What's funny is I forgot that I had that. So as I was reading through it, I have it all on my iPad and I'm having to make it all big and read it. I'm like, this is really annoying. And then I was like, oh, yeah, I have the plan from March of twenty twenty. Yes, beautiful. It's always nice to see the pictures. All right. Well, we will go ahead and close a public comment and bring it back to uh council and staff. And and really, this is just, um we're not giving direction per se, but let's just uh maybe wrap up with some final uh thoughts on the uh El Camino Plan before we move on. So uh and let's see, anybody wishing to speak? Uh Mayor Potem Newsome?
I just want to go back and say how exciting it is to to look back at this uh designs and these ideas. Um when we originally looked at this, it had a lot of great potential and it still does. And I think sometimes as we're making decisions and developing and as our community tends to grow and evolve with these different locations, it's nice to see the blueprint. It's nice to see some of these ideas and recommendations come come together. And on some of the new plans, when we talk about the walkability trails and connecting those on the um further part of El Camino, the northern part, um some of the different designs that are going in there really did take into, you know, take into consideration what we were trying to do and the vision of walking paths and bike paths. So thank you again. It is helpful to uh have something to constantly refer back to, and it's hard to believe that we looked at this and when was it, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? Here we are, and it's still happening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um I got a note that uh somebody was on the phone and wished to speak, so I will go ahead and reopen public comment. Uh and with that, uh Luke, if you could bring on our caller.
Good evening, Council. It's Jeff Osland. Um I think the recipe book that uh Phil is bringing forward has a lot of very good merit. There's a few concerns that um I hope we keep in mind going forward. One would be um not all areas like all new architecture or businesses. I think there's an appreciation sometimes for some of the older uh architecture uh including our downtown. Things could be done with facelists. Um and some of the businesses down the line may need to relocate, but some of them shouldn't relocate because people do come in um and look at different shops because they are located in the downtown. So I think we have to have a balance there. As far as uh the improvements and also, as Director Dunsmore was speaking about the uh change in traffic down the line, if we can pull it off and go to one lane and put parking in the middle. Um I hope that we do all the projects at the same time that could save some money rather than doing a sidewalk rehab and then coming back a year later and messing up the sidewalk, because I'm sure we're going to be doing a lot of infrastructure. So I think if we keep this as a recipe book and a guide with great ideas and maybe pulling in what works, but I think we're also going to have a lot of changes over the next couple of years in what businesses really thrive and what businesses change. Um if you're looking at patterns, uh the delivery companies with food, for instance, are coming out of secret kitchens that most people don't realize. And those could be out of our downtown as well. Um or they could be in a different location. So I think when that's happening in the master plan, we need to be considering trends that are happening elsewhere, out of state as well, that may come this direction. Um Council, you guys did a great job in asking questions tonight. Uh you answered most of my concerns and uh thoughts, so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. And we have open public comments. I want to give any other members here on the phone or in the webinar a chance to speak. So go ahead and raise your hand if you're on the webinar and you didn't speak before and would like to now, or if you're on the phone, simply press star nine. All right, I am not seeing any, so I will go ahead and close a public comment again. Um and yes, definitely a good recipe book, being smart with infrastructure and all of those kinds of things. So thank you very much for that input. Uh we'll go to Councilmember Borbo and then Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, uh Phil, I had a question for you. In in um the very first sentence of our um staff report, it points out that, you know, this was funded by a Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. Um so no, uh no city general funds were used, but um my question is, what is Caltrans, when a report like this is completed, as part of the grant, what do they want to see out of this? Do we just submit the report to them and they go, okay, thank you very much, you you know, you got something? Or is there anything else that has, that's done with Caltrans who was the funder of the grant?
No, that's it. They wanted to review the report and they wanted to see that um ultimately that our city council had reviewed the report and that we finalized it. Doesn't mean we have to adopt it as a policy document, but they wanted to see that we produced results, obviously with the grant funds, and that we came up with a plan or idea book and that our our advisory bodies or our council reviewed it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, one of the things that I spent a lot of time thinking about on this, on the plan at this time are the issues around um circulation and in particular connectivity for uh for pedestrians and bicyclists, you know, and how how that would actually work. Um because, you know, my mental mode of that is, oh, you use bike lanes to make El Camino, you know, protect them to make El Camino less intimidating. But I think that we need to also think about that that maybe that bike lanes on El Camino are not necessarily the be all and end all. You know, the the report points out, you got bike lanes going at, you know, next to cars going forty mile, forty-five miles an hour. That's scary. And I'm not sure even with electrified bicycles and electric scooters that um that we have that we have people that are going to want to go from one end of El Camino to the other to do business and then come home. And on, you know, on anything but, in anything but a car um or on a bus or a trolley or something of that sort. If we could do something, you know, that a trolley that would connect the space would be cool. But uh but I think that we do need to think about the um ability to get to those nodes to 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 neighborhood-supporting commercial services uh by walking and biking. And maybe, you know, as Mayor Potem Newsom was mentioning, the idea of some of these these paths uh circulation elements that happen back behind El Camino so that you have a nice walking path that connects, connects a whole area. Um and then also some attention to how could people get from the housing that is um, you know, back up the hill um behind them or in in, within a half-mile radius, how can they safely get to these kinds of of experience nodes um with with that not necessarily always being a car. Particularly where we have the kinds of experiences that young people are attracted to. Um we want to make more of those uh transportation options available. So I think that um I also think we really needed to to consider those issues um in this report about pedestrian safety. Did, the issue is crossing the street. It's a huge wide street. And if we're going to have it vibrant and active and relating to neighborhoods that are across the street, so that the things that are on the west side of El Camino are are um engaging and attractive for people who are living um on the east side of El Camino and not, and not solely people who are walk, who are riding there. It's got to be safe to cross the street. Um, you know, the, the report is big on uh hawk signals. They have like half a dozen places that we want to have hawk signals. Uh so I just want to check as a reality check for that. Uh the approximate cost of a hawk signal?
Well, I, and I think that's just, again, it's a recipe book, so I don't know if we want to like dive into details of costs of hawk signals. So we kind of keep it
Okay.
For a higher level of safety and things, because you're you're making some good points in that area.
Yeah, well, I think it might, you know, but the best I understand, you know, that that those hawk signals are really expensive. That's part of what makes the the downtown um infrastructure improvement plan really costly. So it's like, you know, three police cars or four police cars to go, you know, the cost or half a fire truck to get one of those signals. So I don't think we're going to have um a dozen of them up and down El Camino Real. But I do think we need to be attentive to um some of the things that, you know, having islands in the middle where people can stop as they're crossing or to make those crossings safer so that you're, you're doing two lanes instead of four. Um some, you know, some of those features. Um I think that would be helpful. Um I also think that there's an opportunity in that area I was asking about earlier in the stretches of El Camino where we don't need to have all of those lanes of traffic to handle the traffic. This, and I was thinking we would either need it for all of that, you know, that or none of it, but it's chopped up. The traffic flows through this, a section and gets on the freeway and and distributes, and other sections, not so much. So in those sections where it's not so much, I think we have an opportunity to think about creative uses of uh the right-of-way. Um, you know, for uh community-serving things that would that would play into what you're talking about, about street activation, that would create connection opportunities alike for the community, whether that's, you know, a a corehole area or a raised beds for a community garden or um, you know, it's different kinds of gathering spaces. Uh particularly as we are raising the density of some of housing in some of those areas to create those connection spaces. You know, it has the effect of a park without necessarily being a park. Yeah, or
And Councilmember Funk, I think these are some of the details, like as we get more to the general plan, I kind of want to keep us just a little more broadly here and not getting so down into specific details.
Okay. Well, I did, since that was something that was, you know, hit that, but really not gotten at, I wanted to raise that out so that council members might have the opportunity to see, you know, to play into whether that would be useful. Um there are a couple of other things that um that I wanted to um mention. Um I do like the idea of of considering a focused uh planning, uh a, like a master planned or or thing, process um targeting, um as the mayor was suggesting, maybe, you know, push to take one, work on the low, low hanging fruit. We really can't do all of these at once. So just to to pick the right one, see if that's something that the property owners are receptive to. Um see what we might um do to to implement some of these concepts and make this a more attractive space for people to invest in um and build the kinds of things that we want. And then uh I do also want to mention an issue with the, in the, looking at the various things about zoning. Um some real attention to consolidating some of our commercial service work so that, I mean, you know, we need places to get our cars fixed um and buy auto body parts and do those kinds of things. But we don't necessarily need, but they, they add value to similar kinds of businesses if they're together and they detract from similar businesses if they're sitting um next to La Plaza or some other place. So to be able to be a little more focused in our zoning as this goes forward, to achieve some of this vision articulated in the plan to, so that we help businesses not only be profitable themselves, but create extra profitability um from, for each other and benefits for the community to have a more cohesive experience. So I do think that some of the zoning things in here will be worth uh pursuing um to try to achieve that. I'll stop for now and and check my notes and see if there's anything else that's got to get fed into the process.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Daras.
Thank you. Yeah, Phil, that was, on the circulation issue, that was one of the questions that I forgot to ask, but obviously, it's it's a challenge all the way up and down um El Camino, because it's eighty feet across from curb to curb. So and especially in the area between uh forty-one and Curburel, there's no crosswalk to that entire length. I don't know what the length is. It's at least a mile, I imagine. To make that safer, you know, what we've talked about and what Councilmember Funk mentioned is, you know, an island in the middle to sort of break up the crossing. You know, I was thinking about this today as I was reading through this, is, is it feasible? And this is probably, a lot of people, anybody watching is probably going to gasp when I say it, but bringing a certain portion of El Camino somewhere in between there, whether once or twice or however it's feasible, down to two lanes where the sidewalks themselves actually become closer. You know, it slows traffic down and then it widens, you know, for maybe a couple of hundred feet. That gets, that gets some node, a node going on somewhere within that. And then, and then it's a a quick cross the street. It's only a couple of lanes. And then it widens up to the to the five lanes that we have, whether we need them to continue to be five lanes or not. But is that something that's feasible to to be able to to create or to change up uh um El Camino Real, you know, for that purpose, for cer-, you know, circulation purposes?
There might be spots along El Camino where we don't need all four lanes, and the analysis does get into that. That particular section you pointed out is the most problematic, and it's the most problematic because of the lack of cross streets. And darn it, when they built Highway one-on-one and they isolated us for a long section, it made it really challenging. And transportation professionals, especially our own um Public Works Director, will tell you that mid-block crossings are an absolute no-no. And so whether we narrow that section or do things with it, it's going to be really difficult from the location of the Highway one-on-one off-ramp um next to the car wash there to uh the very next street, which is uh what, San Luis Avenue, whatever, before you get to Curburel. There's a big section in there where there's not a cross street and there's not an intersection. And it's going to be really difficult to change that flow. Um because traffic expects to keep moving. And so as soon as you introduce something in there, they're going to still want to keep moving. And um anything we create is going to be an artificial thing. So it's, it's a challenge. I think the study did point out some areas that are further south that could be narrowed and could have different treatments to them. But that section between Curburel and forty-one um probably handles the largest volume of traffic and has the least intersections. And I'm so glad that our Public Works Director just showed up on the screen because he can add to my conversation, which um with much more um detail.
I I was paying attention. I was just going to see if Phil got to where he needed to get. Actually, um Councilmember Daras, the uh a lot, part, portions of El Camino actually are doing that right now. So like, for instance, in between uh San and Salmo and Del Rio, you know, as you approach and exit those, I'll call them interchanged nodes on El Camino, you actually are four lanes and then you narrow down to two lanes. So the road gets uh more narrow. Sidewalks come closer and you have more boulevard area behind the Sidewalks come closer and you have more boulevard area behind the sidewalk to plant trees and do some of those other landscaping for, uh, those developments within there. But, um, I agree with, uh, Director Dunsmar. That section between, uh, uh, Curburel and basically the VON Center there, uh, for forty-one Northbound, that's a long stretch with no designated crosswalks. And that might be, uh, at that San Luis or, um, Pueblo exit or interchange right there, uh, might be like an ideal place if the city were to install a, uh, a beacon hawk, that might be an ideal place for, you know, instead of putting ten of them in. Maybe we identify a couple of those locations where they, they really, uh, would be needed, you know, because in, in that section, the number two lane on the outside, it almost acts like, what I've noticed is it acts as a kind of a turnoff into the businesses and then a turnout out of the businesses, the driveways. So if you're just cruising along, you know, Camino, you're gonna be on that number one lane, you're the center turn lane. But if you're, um, in that number two lane, there's a lot of driveways, a lot of businesses, a lot of cars coming in and out. And, um, so it almost acts like a deceler turning lane in a lot of cases.
Thank you.
You know, council member Darris, when you said, I'm gonna make a suggestion that people might gasp, I thought, oh, I'm just gonna talk about it roundabout. I think the, the only thing more controversial than, you know, slimming down a lane is a roundabout. So I, I think, you know, certainly while you're, you want input, we're not voting on anything. What you're really hearing, you know, clearly is like that walkability, that safety, while also getting people, you know, through, you know, the El Camino, um, quickly in certain spots. It's, it's gonna be a, an interesting, you know, problem to fix, but I, I know we're up to the task. But, uh, you can see where, where a lot of us are coming from here. Um, I, I mean, just a, a couple of comments, I'm glad, you know, to see that we're talking about, you know, these big swaths of parking areas that are really no longer needed. And I think that will increase in a couple of ways. One, if we do make it more walkable and we connect as a council member Funk and Mayor Protim Newsom are talking about with the, the residential areas and back, more people will be walking to those businesses. And, you know, as, as odd as it might be for all of us to, to think about, we're, we're going to have self-driving cars sometime in the not-too-distant future. Um, you know, it could be ten miles or ten miles, sorry, it could be, uh, ten years down the road, whenever that is. But we don't want to be planning a city with tons of parking that suddenly twenty years down the line, we've gotta re, rethink everything. So there's a balance right now with the need for parking, but also over time, I think a decreased need. Uh, and the final thing I wanted to mention is, as I look at the, they start out the new vision for El Camino ten years from now. And it's, uh, it says in part, the corridor has two new significant job modes that have attracted a variety of small to large businesses from incubators to expanding tech and R and D industries. New housing and mixed-use development have followed, offering a range of homes for the growing employment base. And I think that's key for us to remember. The increase in housing needs to follow the jobs and the businesses coming. Um, we've, we've got an imbalance. We talk about it a lot. And I think we need to be careful that even when we see these opportunities for mid-block and, you know, people who want to come in and make the money and do that, it can be an easy thing to check off the list, but it's not the first thing that we need. And so I think it's important for us to really focus where we're going to have the greatest impact for longevity, uh, for our economic base. And that would be, uh, you know, potentially that first low-hanging item we were talking about. But really those commercial nodes, the job sectors, that's where we need to focus, uh, before the housing, the housing does need to follow. Uh, any other input from council before we go on to our next item or the end of our meeting here? I've seen none. I've got, so council member Funk, I saw you looking over your notes. I thought something might be coming.
Yeah, I did. Uh, one of the things in there that you did mention in your presentation was giving some thought to trees and in particular using trees to give some sense of place to our community when people come in off the freeway at those various, you know, thinking about, now we have certain areas of the town are considered gateways. But every time you come across the free, off the freeway, that will be somebody's first impression of our community. And to the extent to which we can use landscaping to, um, create that sense of, of who we are, uh, with trees, that I think could be a very high payoff um, investment in making our community attractive and drawing people, um, to stop and visit and stay a little while, spend some money.
Thank you. Alright, I think we are complete. Thank you, Director, for, for that report, for your, uh, leadership and spearheading this up, the El Camino Plan. We appreciate it and we look forward to more.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we'll now move on to council announcements and committee reports. And so I will just go in my squares here and we'll start with council member Borbo.
Thank you. Uh, tomorrow I have a I WMA, an Integrated Waste Management Authority meeting. Um, at that meeting, where, as I previously mentioned, uh, and most of you are aware, the county had, has voted to withdraw from the, uh, Joint Powers Agreement that makes up, that created the I WMA. Their withdrawal will be effective November fifteenth. Um, so at tomorrow's meeting, we will, um, review a very, very brief amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement that would reflect the county departing and, and a couple of provisions that relate directly to that. And then we will discuss that after that, and that, that amendment would be submitted to the cities for ratification and it's necessary so that the, um, the J, you know, the I WMA could continue to do business without the county, uh, present. Um, after that though, um, we'd certainly anticipate that, uh, the I WMA will, um, kind of at the request of many cities, um, will be looking at other changes to the JPA that makes up the I WMA. And we'd do that, you know, over the next three, four month period. Um, so that's something we'll be talking about tomorrow, but in the short term, it means that, um, means most likely, assuming the board agrees, um, a JPA, a very brief JPA amendment will be sent out to all the cities for ratification just to reflect that the county is no longer part of the organization. Um, so that's probably the, the most significant technical thing that will take place at that meeting. We'll also be getting, uh, some revised data that will also be provided to the cities in regards to the, um, the rate increase that the I WMA proposed, um, eh, as, to impose on haulers. Um, and that the cities would need to reflect in their hauler agreements. Um, the cities had asked for a revised set of information on that, uh, that reflected the county's departure. So we'll be hearing about that. Um, in the meantime, the I WMA is working with, um, a technical committee. Laura is our representative to that committee, Laura Christensen, our deputy city manager. Um, and they're still discussing like the, um, draft ordinances that the cities will need to consider to allow the implementation of all the new requirements of thirteen eighty-three, of SB thirteen eighty-three. Um, so anyway, that is about it. And Mayor, as you know, you invited me to the mayor's meeting a, as the I WMA Board President to, uh, discuss and answer questions from the mayors that they might have regarding the status of things at the I WMA.
Yes, I think we're looking forward to that on Friday. That'll be, um, good, good to hear from you, uh, directly. And I know we're moving forward with each of, uh, the cities doing, uh, you know, looking at doing some sort of a resolution to, you know, commit to, to stay in it. And so thank you for, uh, taking your afternoon to, to be with us. Uh, Mayor Potem Newsom.
Um, the only committee report that I have is that we have a design review committee meeting on Thursday at two PM. We'll be looking at design and neighborhood compatibility on California Manor Apartments project at one zero one six five. Yeah.
Uh, you cut out a little bit when you said when the meeting was, is that?
Oh, sorry. It's Thursday at two.
This Thursday? Okay, the Thursday, I thought you said two. Thank you. Uh, council member Funk.
Yes, I will be participating with, uh, Mayor Potem Newsom in the DRC meeting on Thursday. Uh, also, the Atascadero Groundwater, uh, Base, Atascadero Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency did not meet last week, but it will be meeting on November third. Um, and looking at the, the plan that the council was briefed on, uh, by Mr. Neal, uh, not too long ago. Uh, and then the, uh, Home Services Oversight Council, uh, will be having a, a special full meeting of the council um, on Wednesday, the twentieth of October, from eleven to twelve. And our purpose for this is to, um, review and approve grant recommendations uh, so that they can be presented to the Board of Supervisors, uh, in a timely fashion in November.
Thank you. Council member Darris.
Thank you. Uh, last week I attended the, uh, annual conference for the California JPIA in San Diego. Uh, the main purpose for me going there was they needed an, an in-person forum to vote in their new board. Uh, that was essentially a one-hour meeting and a tough, since I'm gonna go all the way down there, I may as well sit on some of the sessions. And I was quite interesting. Um, I sat in at least half a dozen sessions over the three days that I was there. Uh, learned quite a bit and I'm looking forward to, you know, implementing that as much as I can, uh, while I'm here. And that's it.
Thank you, council member. And I thank you for making that trip. I know that that was not a small amount of time out of your schedule. And, uh, the J, uh, CJPIA, they, they put on some good trainings and they also pay. They, I mean, they, they pay for the training, they pay for the lodging. And so really, uh, it's, it's quite a benefit to, uh, city council members and to the city to be able to participate in things like those and, and really know, no funds out of the city, uh, general fund for that. So.
Correct. Yeah, no, no, it was really good. I was glad that I went. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for that. Uh, so, um, Charlie, uh, council member Borbo had mentioned the mayor's meeting, so that is this Friday and we are hosting in Atascadero. Uh, we are going to do it at the event Zoo Garden, so be able to show off a few animals while we're there. Uh, and we'll be talking about, as we said, I WMA and, uh, Assemblyman Cunningham will be there to brief us. And so I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions for him. And then, of course, all the reps from Senator Laird's office and Congressman Carbajal and, um, I think I'm missing, so, oh, and then Dave Mullenax from the League of California City. So we're looking forward to that. And Rochelle, of course, will be there as well. Um, I had Slocog last week. Uh, nothing significant to report, um, except for, uh, you, you might know that there's sort of that missing link. Um, John Fushang will not like it when I call it the Atascadero Templeton Connector, because he insists it's the test, the Templeton Atascadero Connector. Um, but there's that, uh, because of the Union Pacific Railroad and, you know, issues with right-of-way. Um, that has gone a little bit haywire and the, we're basically, there's a, a timely use of funds that we need to meet. And so we have an extension through March of twenty twenty-three. Uh, so worst case is we would lose that funding and then, and when I say we, I mean, the project would lose that funding uh, and then need to come back when it's shovel-ready. But, uh, it's just a lot of issues have come up with that, uh, Union Pacific and the right-of-way. So, uh, it is underfunded and at risk. And that is it for, yes, council member Borbo.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, this is not a city-assigned committee, but you know, I've been on the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee. And the other day I got a call from Dave Mullenax saying, hey, somebody suggested you be the vice chair. So, um, I'm not sure who did that. I didn't.
Probably Rochelle.
I said I would do it. And I got an email today that says I'm the vice chair of the Revenue and Taxation Committee. So.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, and, and as I'm speaking of Slocog and RTA, um, I think, uh, I, and I think, uh, council member Funk, you were at the Fine Arts Academy Wednesday. We did, uh, council member Funk and I participated in the Walk to School Day. And so she was at Fine Arts, I was over at San Benito. And so that was great. I mean, a lot of kids there doing it. And so it was funny, because I had posted something about it and someone commented and said, well, when I was a kid, every day was Walk to School. But that was good. And so council member Funk, thank you for participating in that.
My pleasure. And I will report that I walked to school to celebrate that.
I did too. I walked to San Benito. Perfect. We probably passed each other just a little at different times, but yeah, yeah. Yeah, I thought I should, like, practice when I preach. I walked from my house down to San Benito, a little over a mile. So that was a good job. Uh, Mayor Potem Newsom, you were gonna say something?
I heard you saw Abigail at her school.
Yeah.
I heard you were her friend.
Nice. She never talks to me until she knows the mayor at her school, right? Oh, that's my friend. Uh, she's darling. Uh, yeah, I know more kids than I think I do. So it's, it was, it was a fun day. All right. And, uh, with that, any individual determinations or actions? All right, seen none. Meeting adjourned.
Alright.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Bye.